Push my button, bright green. I know, I forget. If you would, I'm gonna open the meeting at 6:32. Sorry Bob, I'm a little bit late. If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna start by appointing Nelson and Mark to fill in for our full members who are absent tonight. Bob Best being the obvious one, he's had a prior commitment that he couldn't change, so he called me and said, "Guess what?" So here I am. When you come up to speak, make sure your microphones are turned on and they speak clearly into the microphone. Make sure it's close to you and the light is bright green. We can hear you here, but sometimes it can't be heard for the audience that's watching on the TV or in the recording. So, next planning board meeting is currently scheduled for January 2nd in this Matthew Thornton room. We have a consent agenda, an extension request for 17 Smith Road L&amp;W Supply site plan. What's your preference? Anybody? Nelson?
I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
Oh, true. Bob's not here, so because this woman is here. You got it.
Would you please repeat the question?
Halim has us, I think.
I have, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Thank you.
Consent agenda.
All in favor? 5-0-0. Alright, first item is Colt Refining Inc., applicant, and King Herrick LLC and Evan Realty LLC owners. Continued review for acceptance and consideration for final approval of a site plan to construct a 97,600 square foot light industrial facility with associated site improvements. The parcels are located at 12A Star Drive and unnumbered parcels off Herrick Street and King Street in the I-1 Industrial and Aquafor Conservation Districts. Tax map 3D hyphen 1 lots 2 hyphen 1 and 20 hyphen 1 and tax map 3D hyphen 2 lot 20 hyphen 1. Case, planning board 2023 hyphen 27. This item has been continued from the October 17th and November 7th planning board meetings. Gentlemen, please introduce yourselves and have at it.
Alright, good evening.
Mike? My name is Jason Hill. Can y'all hear me okay?
Okay, Grace says yes.
Good. Alright, good evening, members of the Merrimack Planning Board. My name is Jason Hill. I'm here on behalf of TF Moran, TF Moran's office, here on behalf of the applicant. This is for the proposed Colt Refining expansion at the about, the formerly noted address off of Star Drive and Herrick Street, King Street. We met with you in October with the plan, had a long discussion. I can recall the details if necessary. Essentially, this is a site plan, you know, for the new facility. It'll involve a merger of the parts of these three, these three parcels to, as a subsequent, you know, condition of the, of an approval, voluntary lot merger. We have, this is a site plan, color site plan, you all have a copy of the package. We're like, tonight we're here, I'm seeking conditional approval. We have met, like I said, last month, and I'll go over a few things about the updates from the meeting. We are, we received a second round of, so we responded to Fuss and O'Neil comments as well as the town technical comments. We've received last week an updated second review. We reviewed the comments. They shouldn't result in any material change in what you're looking at. Their tech, technical belt and suspenders, second level review comments, which we will be working on responding to, you know, in the short term. So those are in the work, as well as some staff and comments, and then the comments from the sewer department. They're all technical comments, nothing of significant to mention this time. We have made a few changes to the plan, so really where we left off last month was there was some screening that was discussed at the abutting property off of King Street, being provided by the applicant to screen that residential, single-family residence from the project, the new project. So that was something that was discussed. And further it discussed and what was looked, one of the reasons for the continuance was basically the architectural waivers that were, needed to be looked into, which ones actually were required under the proposed architecture. And then there was a, basically some minor changes to the site plan to update my building footprint and my entrance, you know, the door access points with the architectural plans. So those were the, the outcome of the last meeting. This plan here is an updated site plan showing the, the footprint has remained it significantly as current, as prior, prior reviewed, except for we have added a, a jog or an exterior wall plane extension in this location to break that facade into halves. And then there was some, some details around the entry sequences, some columns and some towers that broke up that facade more along the north face. And then we also added along the west face, a wall plane projection in the bottom southwest corner here to break both those facades. Those are the facades that, although not really visible from the neighboring property, the, the primary facades. I've adjusted the handicap parking in the sidewalk sequences to, you know, to be consistent with the architectural plan. That, and there's some side entries on this building, those aren't accessible entries, so those are just no, no handicap parking there. We have done that, we have, also, you can't see here, but on the site plan, I've added a a privacy fence in this area to screen, this is the resident who the abutter, who was present and discussed that option. So I've provided a six-foot privacy fence in that location to screen that property as, and act as a barrier for, you know, the child, any children to.
Jason, what about the, what about the property north of there, on the other side of King Street?
Here?
Yep.
Well, that wasn't a concern of the abutter, no, there was no concern raised of that property. This is also a large open space, and we're gonna have landscaping here, so that's sufficiently screened. We also have agreed to, and I'm showing on the plan of record, that's been submitted to not, to prohibit snow storage along that abutting property line, it's shown here, and shown along this property line here, along that northern abutter who had expressed the concerns in a letter to you all.
So where are you doing snow storage?
Excuse me?
Where are you doing snow storage?
See, the plan, I didn't bring that, well, I have the plan, I didn't have it as part of my package, but we have it in this area.
I see it, okay.
And along the train, railroad track, well, this is our property, as well as along other portions of the, there's this side trailer storage area where there's area around the perimeter of that site, as well as along this perimeter, it's level. So there's plenty of perimeter area for snow storage. And if there's a snowy winter, then they'll have to truck it into a property that's not in the groundwater protection district as this property is. So those things were done. We also, here's a detail of the fence, it's just your standard, oh, you know, a white vinyl privacy fence, six feet height. That's the detail, it's in the plan set as submitted. This is the architectural plan, the architectural perspective view of the north facade, the main entry to the facility. Showing the, those bump at the, the wall plane projection here for that, the entries, both entries. And then we have a parking lot. And then there's a series of plans, this is the loading area, which we're asking a waiver for this to not have the breakups in its facade. And I'll get into the waiver in a minute. So this is looking north, basically from the existing Colt Refinery loading area north into the new loading area of the new facility. They'll share loading, you know, circulation space, which will help to minimize the amount of just, this is the, both basically the, the sides of, along the railroad and along the east and west are basically based, basic wall plane. As you see in this rendering, this is what it'll look like. But the west facade that faces Herrick Street has a wall plane projection. It's not shown on this plan that bumps out six, 10, six to 10 feet to break it up per the requirements of the architectural, industrial architectural ordinance. That'll require, this will not, but the, the two waivers for architecture are regarding the loading area in the, in the east side which faces the railroad. The, that's the floor plan. This is a, it's a elevation view, it doesn't show the projections because it's into the screen. You can't pick it up on a straight elevation view. So there's a, a wall plane projection on these elevations. This is a waiver for the architecture, part, partial waiver, which I submitted for the facades of the building, which basically, that, the regulations that, there's no, if you have a facade exceeding 200 feet, then no uninterrupted length of the facade shall exceed 200 horizontal feet. Anything exceeding 200 shall incorporate wall plane projections having a depth of at least two and a half percent of the width of the entire facade and extending for at least 20%. So the north facade meets the regulation, that's the main entry. And there's, I submitted the calculations. The west elevation, which is the side facing Herrick Street, also meets the regulation. The east elevation is 244 feet in total length with no projections, and the east elevation is facing the railroad. And then an undeveloped property on the other side of the railroad, there, it's not visible from any public right-of-way. And as such, the conformity, conformity to that regulation would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. But the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit intent of the, or intent to the regulations. The fourth elevation is the south elevation we're asking a waiver for, which is the loading dock sequence, the loading dock area, loading zone. That's 410 feet in length. This is a truck loading dock which faces an existing loading dock, the trucked area, it's all heavy truck traffic. Adding projections interferes with the manu, if we were to add projections to break up that plane, it would introduce unnecessary dead space and interfere with the manufacturing processes as well as truck maneuvering and backing in, into those docks. And for those reasons, and that also does not face a public, any public right-of-ways. It's not visible from the surrounding properties to any significant degree or, or at all. So I think we would submit that, that the conformity, strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship. And we'd request a waiver for that elevation view as well. So finally, there was a waiver identified in the Fuss and O'Neil review regarding the, there's a requirement that, that is a local requirement for local, basically showing 15-inch or greater caliber existing trees on your site plan. So for that, that criteria is not, so, but I'm just gonna submit my written request. So mostly, these properties are cleared in their existing condition with like a brush, scrub, scrub, and there's some really thin new growth. There's a, there's a significant stand of pine trees that are located adjacent to the loading dock expansion. And the, some of those may be exceeding 15-inch caliber. We're gonna completely just remove those because of the expansion of the facility. So there's no benefit in identifying those since we're not using any of the veget, any of the, we're not using any of the existing trees on the property for any zoning relief, i.e. buffering of above budding properties, any type of perimeter landscaping requirements, any type of buffering of wetlands areas. There's no regulatory nature or fundamental reason to require us to, to show, to locate those trees because of the, just the use of the property and the fact that we're not relying on, on them, any of those trees for any type of zoning or site plan. And it would be just an unnecessary extra burden to survey that. And so we respectfully request for that to be waived. And that would be my presentation.
Thank you, Jason.
For any questions, thank you.
Board, any questions?
Well, I have questions about the whole, whole site. I think my only question on this one had to do with landscaping, and it comes close to this, but we didn't discuss landscaping in any detail. And we did get a, what I think is supposed to be a landscaping plan with our package, although it isn't a typical landscaping plan. It doesn't call out what the trees are you're planting, or how many, or what's being changed. I'm looking, Jason, I'm looking at this one.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, sir, thank you. So that is not a landscaping plan, although it shows it. That's a graphic, we did submit with our submittal, I'm looking at it now, an actual landscaping plan when the load it, that specifies the, it was designed by a licensed and actually stamped, I don't know, the PE stamped it.
Oh, then I missed it.
It's sheet, C8-1 and C8-2, so here's this, the planting legend. And it was designed by a licensed landscape architect who's been working for like 40 years.
You got those numbers again, C what?
C8-1 and C8-
C8-1.
Hyphen 2. Which is this next sheet. And we're proposing a, a little heavy area of trees and shrubbery along the Herrick Street frontage, as well as landscaping interior and a substantial perimeter buffer with trees and shrubbery densely populated.
It's on your screen as well, Nelson.
Yes, sorry.
He's highlighting.
I, I got it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And these are all indigenous, like hardy, indigenous, non-evasive, drought tolerant, you know, type of plantings, which we also do for season color, so the, most likely there's designed to be foliage.
Deciduous.
Of all seasons, so like in the wintertime, there'd be some berries, some winter greens, berries. Usually our, our landscape designs are overdone because we have a landscape, you know, just, but it is sheet C8-1 and C8-2.
Okay, thank you. I missed it the first time through and I thought, I thought this arc, this was not gonna hack it, but, but. Thank you, it's something we can go against. The, other questions here having to do with the the application, the memorandum from Casey Wolf for this particular night, evening, calls for, calls out certain recommendations, calls on for approval with certain recommendations. It, one of her items is, "The applicant shall address the remaining comments in the drainage design and sewer water design conflicts and utility design conflict sections of the letter dated December 14th from the town's, from Fuss and O'Neil." I don't think any of us have seen that letter.
Nelson, I can give you a copy of that personally if you would like, I can email that to you tomorrow.
Well, if we're gonna act tonight.
Yeah. So I, I reviewed the letter, every other section was clean. It was, the only sections of the Fuss and O'Neil letter that needed some more attention were the drainage design sections and the sewer sections. But if you wanna, like I said, I can email that letter to you if you wanna see it for yourself.
Casey, can, can you summarize that for us tonight?
Summarize what exactly?
The concerns.
In the drainage report?
Yes.
I would have to pull that out. I don't know the exact concerns, but there were four, five, six remaining comments in the drainage section. That would need probably a third review by the, by our third-party review engineer.
So we can, we could do this subject to compliance, okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Unless Jason wants to comment on it.
All my comments, I've reviewed the comments, and I'm the drainage designer and sewer designer. And the comments will not result in any change in anything that's, you can see, any of the physical improvements in the building location, any surface features. At the end of the day, it may involve like the addition or reduction of a couple of chambers in the ground, the underground system, of the repositioning of a drain manhole by a few feet to reduce a conflict, either vertical or horizontal conflict. Those are belt and suspenders, standard technical comments that really have, they're not.
So you're saying that you feel comfortable that you can comply with
Yes.
the comments, okay.
I've also received state AOT comments, and there's only like a few, and they're not.
But again, you can comply with them.
Very typical, non, non, like basis of design related stuff, where they're not quite the fundamentals, nature of your design is not.
Thank you.
Okay, there were also several other things in your letter, Casey, that seem to have been addressed by a response letter from TF Moran having to do with, let me see here, with, let me see, general note, right-of-way permit obtained from Public Highway Division. Note the drawing, C2, the Town of Merrimack wastewater division and Merrimack Village District Water are not part of the 811. Several of those kind of comments, Casey, that were in your memo, that are in your memo to us as being conditions of approval, and we have a letter from TF Moran saying they've done it. So what are we looking at here?
Well, if they've done it, then they've already met the conditions of approval.
They said they've done it.
Well, I think I meant that we did the, there was a first in, around the October meeting. We received a set of staff, staff comments.
Yeah.
And as well as Fuss and O'Neil comments, and we responded to those comments. That's what I meant when I said we're done. Now, these are some new comments, or maybe a few repeat comments.
I saw the, I saw the letter saying that they were done, but I have a letter from Casey saying they aren't done.
The October comments were completed. The ones that came up in the November meeting have not been completed yet.
Okay.
Or at least as far as Casey's concerned.
I think I'm asking about the October ones first.
Yeah, so I, I can add to that. So if you look under a few of our department comment sections, there are several comments that are remaining. And that's only because when we circulate second submittals, we don't necessarily hear back from every single department. So if we don't hear back, we leave them as open comments that have likely been addressed, but we don't have confirmation from that department quite yet. But we, there were responses to these comments, we feel very confident that this application is very close to meeting all these requirements.
Approval would all obviously be subject to those comments.
Exactly, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it just sounds like double jeopardy for them, but that's okay. I think I summarized.
Mark, did you have a comment?
Yeah, a couple, a couple questions for you. On the waiver request on the east side by the railroad tracks, you mentioned that you were requesting a waiver because of a unnecessary hardship in breaking that up? And what is the hardship?
Nelson, the more irregular you make a building, the structural cost goes up. You're adding different column lines, grids, so the steel costs or whatever the material costs.
So it's just a cost avoidance?
And the pro, it also introduces dead space. If we were to break that wall up to basically meet a token regulation by putting a 10-inch wall projection that no one can see, it just creates inefficiencies as well as costs, both which are negative. And we feel that we've done a good enough job in this area, this, making this building look nice from where it's most visible to offset that.
Okay, fair enough. The other question is, we had an abutter here in October, I believe it was, that was on King Street that did speak about the potential for kids wandering. You've added a fence, as you show it there, only to that north side of King Street. But as I recall, looking, the pictures you showed, looking down the street there, I believe there were also residents on the, on that south side.
Here?
Yep. Aren't there not residents there on that side of the street as well?
That's in a vacant commercial building.
That's a vacant building?
Commercial building.
And there's also, yeah, so that's a vacant parking lot, and there's a two-story commercial building there. So that's what exists on that property.
So no need to have an additional fence there for future purposes?
No, not as, not on our behalf. We're proposing a, a solid landscape barrier on our site. If that applicant in the future has concerns related to their future use, and they're welcome to put in their own, with all due respect to them, their own fencing, but we saw no significance of, of that on that particular.
And if I recall, the King Street itself was gated off at the end, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Seeing nothing further for the board, I'm gonna open this to public hearing. And then we can go back to board comments if we need to, correct?
And eventually you'll need to vote on the three waiver requests.
Yes, yeah. So anybody in the audience wishing to speak for? I know better than that. Any, would you like to speak for it?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions about it.
Sure, if you wanna either sit here or take the, the standing mic. Don't kill yourself here, we got liability that.
I'm for, I'm not against.
And identify yourself, please.
My name is Nathaniel Bud Durgan. I own the commercial property that you just were speaking about.
On the south side of King?
Yep. Otherwise known as the abandoned building in previous meetings. Couple of questions on the fence, there is a fence behind the building that divides the two properties. Are you removing that fence? The existing fence comes from the gate and goes south from, from the gate?
Indirectly.
Well, let, let's continue on with others.
Okay, one of the questions I have is, he's talking about putting a fence up behind the residence.
Yep.
However, there is a gate at the end of King Street.
Yep.
So you're moving the gate?
No.
He's gonna leave the gate?
Yes.
Okay, the gate is attached to a fence that runs down south to the end of our property line. It's, it really goes nowhere, so I'm just kinda curious whether or not that's gonna be removed and the landscape is gonna be.
We can address that.
Okay. One other issue too, I sold them the land that they're working on, and as far as I know, there, at the end of King Street, there was a bubble. Has that been addressed as far as?
The turnaround?
Yeah, the turnaround. That was property of the Town of Merrimack, it wasn't our property. So I don't know.
There was an easement.
Yeah, yep. So that's a question that I have, it's not, it's not a negative, but it's just a question.
And on, on that one, I believe, Casey, I believe we addressed that and that easement had. has been abandoned?
Uh, yeah, that's part of the comments that Public Works has in your memo, that that needs to be abandoned, I, I believe before town council.
Yeah.
I don't believe it's been done yet.
No, but it's, it's part of the conditions.
Yes, it's a condition, you have to get, that's done by the town council.
Okay.
You touched on great drainage a little bit today. Uh, there is a drainage problem in that area. Uh, there is no, there are no storm drains on Herrick, uh, or on King, and the rainwater comes down from DW Highway and literally, uh, yesterday, I couldn't get in the building. Uh, there was so much rainwater built up in that area. So I've got concerns about the drainage easement that current, I believe there's a drainage easement that is on the-
East?
West side of your lot, where you park the trailers?
Yep.
Which is, uh, on the south side of my lot. I just need to make sure that the drainage has been addressed on the new property so that, uh, I don't have more of a drainage issue on the northern property. The other question I have is the exit onto Herrick Street from the west side of the property, whether or not that's gonna be a one-way out or, uh, whether it's gonna be a, uh, two-way, uh, entrance, and only because the approach coming down King Street is, um, dangerous. There's, there's just, it's a drop-off. This, it's a very narrow street, and if there's a car coming up and a truck going out, there could be a potential issue. So, and then the last question I have is just hours of, of operation, whether or not that's gonna be a twenty-four-seven, uh, operation, which really doesn't affect my property, but I'm just kinda curious whether or not that's gonna be-
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jason, you wanna come back and address those while we're doing this?
Yes, thank you. Um, thank you. So there, the first, the existing fence, yeah, as well as the gate attached to it, south of King Street, will not, we're not proposing to remove that.
Okay.
So the plans do not call for it to be removed.
Okay.
Uh, we are proposing on our own property to put in, uh, some landscape, uh, screening, trees primarily in that area on our own property. As was the second point was the, the turnaround easement to benefits the town, which was already dealt with, where as a condition of approval, the next step would be to take that to the town council for an extinguishment of that and the, you know, so that would be a, a step in the future to take. You know, we've received support of DPW for that. Initial support. The runoff, um, drainage, so you're th- this property?
Yeah.
Yep.
Mark? So this sits up pretty high above this, our site. There's actually a dry well in your, in your, um, in your parking lot, or, um, in the low point here, that doesn't discharge. So this site drains to the culvert, uh, under the railroad tracks.
Jason, how does it drain?
The new site will have, uh, catch basins and curbing, and so we're gonna-
Jason?
We will be below your property, so we're gonna actually take run-on from your property. And like you mentioned, King Street, we've included that in our drainage analysis, and we're actually gonna capture that water in our system, which is catch basins, curbing, and then we have proposed five underground infiltration systems to recharge the, the water into the ground, and then there's one above-ground system. So then that effect of this development is a reduction in the flow to the downstream properties, which is, uh, essentially the culvert under the railroad tracks. So that's the drainage design. So for all the storms that is required by the state and the, and the municipality, we're reducing the flow to that point by way of infiltrating the runoff and detaining it in a couple of areas where we're detaining it instead of infiltrating it, and so the culmination of the, these improvements will reduce the flow. And then, um, the fourth point would be, um, the exit point onto Herrick Street, it'll be a two-way drive only for, which is this driveway. Um, it's designed for only, uh, staff. The trucking will continue to come off of Star Drive, uh, as what's currently proposed, existing on the site. So we have a two-way exit there, um, two-way drive off of Herrick Street, which, um, will, um, it's actually located at a point within an existing access easement that benefited, uh, one of the former lots before it's merged, so it was a set point of access via an existing access easement that we're utilizing, and that'll become a two-way driveway. And the fifth point, I actually don't, I didn't recall, I didn't capture the fifth question.
Hours of operation?
It'll be what, uh, equivalent to the existing hours of operation. I'd have to check the website, uh, normal business hours, I believe they're not twenty-four-seven, but I, my, my response to the town is that it would be the same hours of operation that currently exists in their existing facility at this property. No change.
Okay, thank you. And follow-on question, comment?
Please?
Just a quick follow-up on the drainage issue. Um, the two-way street leading out to Herrick, that's the only concern that I have as far as drainage, right in that area there. That's where it all comes down from Denewups to Highway, and then it starts to come south, and it kinda builds up right there. Um, that easement that you just mentioned, I thought it was a drainage easement because there is a, uh, culvert that comes under Herrick, right around that spot where that, that roadway is. So that's kinda the area that I'm kinda concerned about drainage.
Okay.
That area there.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Anyone else speaking for? We'll get to you. Nobody else speaking for? All right. Rich? Anyone speaking against?
Yes.
Either mic.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let me just wish you all a happy season's greetings and hope you have a wonderful Christmas. I have a couple of concerns.
Okay.
First is, um, when we look to get waivers due to cost-
She can't hear you. Bright green? And pull it close.
And re-identify yourself.
I'm Rich, I'm Richard Calica.
Okay.
I have concerns with agreements and easements on the property. I also have concerns with waivers that are asked for due to costs. I don't believe it's an intention of a waiver of hardship to cost, and that, if that were the case, there'd be no nees- reason to have any of these regulations, 'cause they all cost to meet. So a waiver for cost is really not a hardship waiver. Two, I thi- on your plan, you're talking about drainage coming now from a further parcel west, down Herrick Street, onto this parcel, through a culvert under the railroad tracks, that none of this, the only property that has a right to s- send its drainage through that tracks is the old Agway property, which is the old, uh, the old Evan Realty property. We'll give you again copies of the deeds.
Can't do it. We have to have that ahead of time. We can't take it during the meeting.
Okay, I will read from the deeds.
That's fine.
The deed is talking about the drainage easement. If, and to the extent-
Richard, excuse me just a minute. Am I talking zoning res- board agreements?
The practice you're referring to is, we usually do it the zoning.
Okay, go ahead, Richard, pass them out.
Yeah, I, I can-
I have two hats and I had the wrong one on.
Feel better.
That's right, we can share.
Well, yeah, we can share.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, you can read it first, it's a little print.
The Agway easement, which is, uh, on the page that you see, the portion of the easement that is highlighted, states that the property is allowed to use that culvert to drain its drainage, which is the Agway property, through that culvert. Any additional drainage that the Agway property doesn't use belongs to CMI, and therefore they do not have the legal rights to drain all this water onto the, through the culvert. Now, they're saying that there's a, a net gain or loss with what they're doing. It doesn't matter. Number one, I can't imagine you draining all this water through that culvert and not having a net gain, but they don't have the right to drain it onto that property. That's one. Two, I brought up at the last meeting, uh, that there are easements that, uh, that were retained by the owner across to reach, um, Herrick Street and to use Star Drive, and that's shown on page forty-two of the handout, it's highlighted. And it's a little confusing, and I have a title search person reviewing this, but they did not have the time prior to this meeting to do it. But there is nothing in the recorded record that would either remove the easements or incre- or allow additional drainage through that pipe on CMI's property, other than what was the original Agway property. Having said all that, I will say that I think the development is good for the town, but I think it needs to be done without violating the rights of others. They're looking for you to, to approve a site plan that you have physical evidence that is incorrect, 'cause they don't have the right to drain through the CMI property. Uh, the other easements, again, I have to do a little bit more research, but this is what I've come up with. And I think the dev- overall development is good, but I think they need to not ask for waivers due to cost. If we wanna remove the condition, we remove the condition. It's not a, a hardship for cost. And, um, that's all I have to say.
Clarify for me, um, they can't increase the flow through the culvert, is that correct?
No, the, what, the, what, the, there's nothing with increase or decrease. Agway is allowed to use that cu- to use that culvert for their drainage.
Okay.
Anything they don't use from that old property, the old, the Agway property, belongs to, at this time it was Richards, who is now CMI.
So anything that comes off of this proposed property has the right to go through the drainage, is that correct?
No, only the southern portion of the cul- of the existing Evan property, which is the southern side of the developed.
Okay. Thank you.
The northern side does not have rights to drain through the culvert.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody.
Anybody else wanna speak against? Jason, you wanna come back and address those couple of issues?
All right, thank you. Regarding the waiver requests, you know, I-
Are we?
For, uh, lands?
I'm getting waived at.
Yep.
Green light on.
Just keep talking and Grace will let me know.
I had mentioned that that was one of the, you know, reasons for the waiver request amongst others, including inefficiencies within the operating procedures, creating dead spaces within the building, redundancies and other things, so, you know, I can retract the har- the, the cost har- from the hardship, there's still other variable hardships.
All right, thank you.
The, um, the culvert rights were discussed at length last month, last meeting. They, um, we're, so there's, um, and I can summarize if you, you, would you like me, so essentially, there, um, there are many properties within this neighborhood who have prescriptive rights of flowage to that point via gravity. I've went over a map with the board last meeting that shows the existing drainage areas and that multiple, not just the Agway lot, but actually properties, other properties drained to that point in the existing condition, which has been approved by the town's engineering, the, the watershed maps have no issues with our delineations. Even if there was an easement that, this is a private matter that's brought upon by what I perceive as not an attorney, um, so if there was, with all due respect, um, we have prescriptive rights to the flowage, which I've shown within the existing context of the existing drainage patterns. We're also reducing the round of runoff to that culvert, thereby giving it more excess capacity, so if capacity was an issue, which is actually being left with more rather than less, that, um, that easement reference was a part of a subdivision plan that created two lots from this Agway lot, and the reason it was specifically referenced in the deed was because we're creating a new lot, wanting to specifically give that particular lot easement rights, and it wasn't meant to portray all prescriptive rights within the neighborhood that flew, that had, had flown historically to that point. That was all discussed last month, um, and for those reasons, uh, we're within our rights, you know, and we're also within the rights of the town and, uh, the regulations of the drainage criteria of the town and the state of New Hampshire, uh, for, uh, discharge to surrounding properties, off-site properties and receiving waters. Uh, so the report that, uh, submitted, our drainage report demonstrates that, and, um, in a summary, that is meant to address the, the concerns of, uh, Mr. Calica.
Okay, I neglected to mention that after we had no more public hearing, that we were closing the public hearing.
Finally, um-
And then coming back to you to, to speak to any questions, so.
Sorry, and then the easements retained by the owner, we agree and we're, there are easements that we're retaining that benefit other properties, abutting properties. Uh, we're not, we're actually improving the ground upon which those easements exist, which was descri- discussed last month. We're paving where it now is brush and mounds of loam and, uh, debris that exists in those easement corridors today. We're paving those to create driveways for parking areas and such, those are improvements, and we're not going to be proposing any structures or physical impediments in those areas.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the board?
I'm also-
Your, your desires are?
I'm okay with his explanation.
Okay. I, I think I'd like to deal with the waivers first, please?
Okay, I do have some other question.
Okay.
One other question on the site plan in general.
Okay, go ahead.
And it had to do with the discharge of, to the sewer. We didn't, haven't talked about wastewater from this building, but, uh, the, uh, I assumed that it was only sanitary wastewater as we normally consider it, or are there other discharges, industrial discharges to the wastewater treatment plant associated with this new development?
No, they're not. It's all domestic wastewater.
Okay, yeah.
There's any processed water that, that they generate, we get stored and hauled off-site and disposed of.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Discussing waivers? What's your pleasure?
Waivers, waivers, that'll get sorted back down.
I believe we have three of them, is that four? Yep. Waivers regarding the east elevation, the south elevation, and trees greater than fifteen inches. Those are the three waivers we need to consider, correct, Casey? Yes, okay.
Okay. Okay, I owe me.
What's your pleasure?
Uh, I will make a motion, well, I'll make a motion to grant all three waivers since- I will make a motion, well, I'll make a motion to grant all three waivers as requested.
Okay. Strip conformity?
What?
Strip conformity?
Yes. Strip conformity would, he offered me an alternative to the.
Specific circumstances relative to the subdivision or conditions?
Due to the specific conditions of the subdivision.
That's the second one.
The fact that it's buried down here next to the railroad is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Second. Second? All in favor? Any opposed, abstaining? That's 5-0-0. All right. Waivers dealt with. Recommendations from the board?
All right. I'll make a motion to find that with the granted waivers and proposed conditions of approval, the application meets all applicable regulatory requirements necessary and further to grant conditional final approval to the application subject to the recommend, subject to the recommended conditions of approval presented in the staff memo dated December 15th, 2023.
And those discussed today?
And subject to the drainage review.
Is that sufficient?
Do you have any additional conditions to add?
No.
Oh, okay. Then just the ones as written in the staff memo.
Second, by Barbara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
5-0-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Appreciate your time.
You're with me a minute here?
Yeah.
Let me get to where I need to be. That's, that's. All right. We are on to item number four on the agenda. Darty Zebolus LLC, applicant and owner, continued review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a site plan to construct a two-story, 15,000-square-foot office warehouse building with associated site improvements. The parcel is located at 101 Herrick Street, same neighborhood, in the C2 General Commercial, I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 3D hyphen 2, Lot 20, case number Planning Board 2002-320. This item has been continued from the July 18th, September 5th, and October 3rd, and November 7th Planning Board meetings. Make sure your mic is working.
Testing that thing. All right.
As long as Grace isn't waving at me, we're fine.
Good evening. My name is Chris Geida with Fieldstone Land Consultants and working with Joyce Cooling and Heating on this site plan. I'd like to give a brief history. This site was previously approved, actually an active approval for my box facility. The property has since been sold, and we're proposing a smaller building that basically uses the exact same drainage, proposed drainage structures off of the state highway, as well as the stormwater and drainage facilities previously designed for my box. So this is a smaller building, but obviously the same site. As part of this proposal, we've gone before the Conservation Commission and the zoning board and got associated approvals. The zoning board was variance for parking being closer to Danny Webster Highway and a use for warehousing in the district, and both of those were approved. Essentially, there's, we don't have any issue with the review from the staff comments. Some of the other items that are being done, the water is being extended, the water main along Danny Webster Highway up toward the corner of Herrick Street. It is on municipal sewer and water, obviously. The only other outstanding item really is the wetlands permit that was approved through the state. We're working with the state right now to get that either hopefully renewed, but if not, basically resubmitted and reapproved. And we are requesting a few waivers. The, I believe, there's a revised waiver that was sent today. There's really, there's really three. The first, the first two should, should actually be one, section 3.1 and, 3.11, excuse me, and There was a formatting error that made it look like there's more waivers than that there was, so that's one. That waiver is basically for the, excuse me, the landscaping addition to that. We would like a waiver to that. This is the rear area. Notice there are two entrances, one off of Herrick Street and one off of Danny Webster Highway. Danny Webster Highway entrance is for retail use for a facade to the, to the building. The one off of Herrick Street is basically commercial for deliveries and vehicles basically working out of the building. So the, the ones in the rear are obviously designed for tractor trailers. That area is basically, it's much lower than Danny Webster Highway. It's probably about 20 feet lower. So it is an isolated area. There's wooded areas all around. We feel that the requirement for landscaping features in the middle of a parking lot with the commercial vehicles would be a hardship and wouldn't provide any benefit really to the town, so we're requesting a waiver for that.
You're talking about the, it's actually the north end of the building, but it's on the bottom of your, of your plan here. Is that correct?
East.
Okay. West end. No, east end. Yes.
Yeah. And the other, the other waiver was the number of required parking spaces. The area where those, there's additional 19 spaces that are proposed, basically on the easterly limits of that parking area. That will all be paved as part of the stormwater management systems. The only difference is that we would add striping for parking spaces in that area. We would actually like to just remove that waiver, and we're going to go ahead and just put in those lines. I mean, not a big deal. So, so yeah, we'll withdraw that waiver. And I'm going to jump to the, to the fourth one. I do, excuse me, we do have Kurt. Sorry. What was your? Lowry, I'm sorry. Forgot it. Who is the architect with me tonight, too? I'm going to let him speak with the facade if there's any issues with that. But the, again, the waiver for the location of the trees 15 inches in diameter. This site plan, as I mentioned, was previously approved for the my box on a larger scale. I believe that condition was not part of at the time. Since then, you know, this, this area is getting cleared. It actually has been cut. I think it was cut about two years ago, so any trees that would have been are gone. So we respectfully request that waiver. And then as far as the building facade, generally speaking, there's, there's a bump out in the front, and there were some comments as to that didn't meet the 50% requirement as well as some dressing around the windows. Kurt can speak to it more, but basically what, we can change that if we need to, but architecturally, he felt that that was a better approach to accentuate the entrance to the building, and that some awnings could be added along the windows. It is a metal building, so it doesn't really lend itself to very dressy windows, but there certainly could be some, some small things added to that that would kind of break it up to the eye along the windows. And that's essentially it for the, for the waiver request. We have gone through review to all the boards and departments, as well as through Fussin' O'Neil, and have addressed their comments. There was a traffic analysis done by VHB, who essentially determined that there would be no significant change or increase to the, to the roadway from the facility. I think that's about it, and happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board?
The front of the building in your rendering shows it, it looks like a metal building. Is that what it is?
Yep. Pretty bland.
Here comes the real thing. That's better.
That's the front.
Tell us how, this is for customers.
Identify yourself first, please.
What?
I would like to know who he is.
Kurt Lowry from Lowry Architects.
Okay. Can I continue?
You may continue.
Continue questioning. What is going on in here? This is a plumbing supply place, right? Primarily, the business?
Plumbing and heating contractor. So yeah, the, the front, if you look at the floor plan.
Is this a showroom or something?
No.
Kurt, you could grab the mic, the standing mic.
Thank you.
Okay. You talk, he'll point.
I'll have Van point for me. So the, the main entrance to the building is in the center of the front facade, and that's, on the rendering behind you, we've got that bumped out vertically and horizontally in a different color metal panel to accentuate the entrance. On the very front of the building, it's all just offices for salespeople, technicians, that kind of stuff. There's a large training room on the right-hand end as you're looking at it here. And then the back, kind of like, you know, two-thirds, if you will, of that is high bay warehouse space that will be accessed from the loading docks in the back. So, you know, the, the lower portion, which is the upper plan, and that is all storage and, you know, service kind of stuff.
Okay. I was just wondering. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
We good?
With this.
So as Chris mentioned before, the, and it's kind of my bad to start with, the building is, or the lot is part industrial zone, part general commercial zone, and I looked at the industrial regs for the facade breakup. The front facade's 200 feet long, and I had a 45-foot-wide bump out there.
Which is fine.
So I meet the 20%, but not the 50%. But again, we were looking more to accentuate the entrance rather than just have, to kind of break up randomly on that. So that's why it was a little narrower than would be required. And as Chris said, we can add little shade awnings or solar awnings over the windows if we want to try and get some more definition around those, but, you know, the pre-engineered rental buildings with metal siding, you don't really see lintels and sills typically.
Those also, those other three facades also are not facing public scrutiny.
Correct.
The, does this satisfy our, our regs with this kind of a breakup and color change?
It is my understanding that it does not require the, it does not meet our regulations, so therefore the waiver is required.
Waiver be required.
Further questions?
Yeah, further questions. Okay. Did you, did you happen, I know there's an issue here with the entrance onto Route 3 from this parking lot. Did you look at or consider combining your entrance driveway with the neighbor to the south, which has a driveway right on your property line already?
I believe, I believe they have an entrance coming in. You're talking about from the Patterson footer property.
I'm not sure who owns the property.
Yeah. You come down.
I'm talking about this driveway right here, which is right on their property line.
Looks like the Old Bank facility or something.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. If those two could be combined, that would maybe help in with this deal with the state and.
Well, we, we did, I believe we did have state approval previously with DOT, and we're aware that there's also easements, state DOT easements on there, too, that will have to be addressed as, as part of the comments in there through the, from staff review.
Oh, I know we saw, seeing that. What is that?
Well, there's.
Right in here, there's law fees.
Because it's a very.
The law fee.
Yeah. Right. And we need a driveway, obviously a DOT driveway permit as well. We're aware of that as a condition, you know, for utilizing that.
Yes. Did you say you had the GOG?
No.
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 You did not. I was suggesting looking at combining the two driveways to make it easier to get a DOT permission. If you're really utilizing.
You're saying eliminate the DW Highway curb cut and using strictly Herrick Street?
No. I'm, that'd be nice, but this is.
So you're saying come down to the southern end of the property?
Yes.
Southern corner instead of cutting into the middle of the property.
So, so again, it is, it is a steep, you know, quite a steep drop-off. So you can see on this plan, basically, the grading to the, to the south there. Obviously, that would open it up as well to, you know, you wouldn't have any buffer there as far as landscaping buffer or anything like that between the properties. It's certainly something that we could look at, you know, and the engineers may want it. You know, I don't know if they've, they've thought of that, but if that's something that DOT, you know, recommends, they suggest, I'm sure we could revise it, you know. However, I think, obviously, for, for a business, you know, having the entrance, you know, at the center and centered that way is probably more.
Visible.
Yeah. Reasonable. And.
Well, we have other properties along this strip that do just what I suggested.
Yeah, I'm sure. Yeah.
And you may, you may end up there.
Yeah. I mean, right. I mean, DOT kind of makes, makes their decisions based on, on safety, and if, if they feel that this is not a safe situation, you know, then, yeah, we certainly may end up there.
I can't imagine it affecting safety, but anyway, that would be my recommendation would be to look at that.
Hi there. Just a couple of questions for you. So on the south side of the proposed building, which will be open to view for those traveling north on the DW, what's planned over there? Because it doesn't look like there are any wall breaks or anything like that.
That's actually the north side, but south side's similar.
Looks the same, yeah.
Yeah, it's similar. It's only 60 feet long.
Oh, okay.
So nothing's required there as far as breaks.
Okay. It wasn't clear in the footage, either that or I just can't see it. So as you heard from our previous case that was reviewed, stormwater drainage in this area is always being looked at. So where is your stormwater going?
Grab that mic or just grab the handheld. Yep.
So right back here is all the stormwater. Basically, everything coming, there's existing, existing drainage right now coming across DW Highway. That's proposed to basically be directed back out here, so this is off-site water being transferred through. All our onsite water is basically going into these pretreatment basins, and then in here, there's an, there's a StormTech underground chamber system in here. And then in here, there's an, there's a StormTech underground chamber system in here. Stormwater management, just a whole plan, whatever, that the engineer has prepared as far as that, so that's where the stormwater is going.
And relative to that, where's your snow storage going to be?
It's a good question, most likely it'll be on one of these other sheets. But most likely off the end of the parking lot here. And along the edge over here, but let me see if I can find it for you.
I don't see it designated anywhere.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't either, which is why I asked.
Well, we'll certainly get that on there. Obviously it's going to be off the edge of the parking areas here, you know, on the perimeter. You know, if not, obviously it would have to get trucked offsite.
Hi there, just a couple of things for you. In one of your waiver requests, you rescinded that for additional parking? You're, you're going to add parking spaces, that what I understood that?
Yeah, so this area right here, there's, was proposed 19 spaces. Initially, they weren't going to, to basically stripe those because they didn't need them right now, but this is going to be paved anyway, so it's really just a matter of marking it. So we're going to go ahead and do that.
Okay, so on the front side of the building, the, the metal panel, the colors in your rendering, are those, is that an accurate rendering for colors?
Yeah, yes it is.
And is that, is that part of Joyce's branding or anything like that? Or is that just an architectural preference?
No, it's just an architectural preference, nothing to do with the color.
One of my comments, concerns, I would say, is one of your proposed waivers is to eliminate some additional trees within the parking area for shade. With this building is only sits back from the main road by 60 feet, 65 feet, something like that? It's a bit of a sea of parking lot than a, a building that kind of blends in with the, with the blacktop and the parking lot. Is there anything that breaks that up for a little bit of greenery to soften that?
Yeah, so, so really, the waiver area that we were talking about primarily is, is the rear parking lot. This is going to be landscaped all through here. There's a landscaping plan.
I saw a little bit, but can you, what are those? What is that landscape of?
Let me, let me find it here. So basically, these are all called out with numbers and indicating, indications over here. So there's, it's green ash, red oak, rhododendron, white lilac. What else is on here? So most of these are basically, you know, low, basically low shrubs, you know, so that you obviously still maintain site distance and, you know, visible, visual appeal for the building.
And then the rendering shows some landscaping immediately in front of the building, but I don't see that on the landscaping plan. Is that intended to be there to add some color to that?
Yes, it was. In talking with the owner, he said, you know, they'd like to have something, not just, again, as you mentioned, not just pavement and asphalt to the building face.
Yeah, it's a very hard, hardscape vision.
Yeah, it's a tight, as you said, it's a tight site between building and, and there's not a whole lot of room to put.
Is there a separate landscaping plan that we can look at?
Yes, that.
What's the page?
Sheet eight.
Eight.
Thank you.
And that, that does not show these plantings right now, but that's certainly something that we can add.
It'd be my preference to show a little more, a little more greenery in this.
Yes.
Then with the sign above the, the entrance. Is that a lighted sign? What, what is that?
Quite frankly, I don't know. It was just a representation of a sign. I don't know what the sign regs are in town, that'll go as a separate permit. You know, as far as size and, you know, square footage limitations and if it has to be, or if it can be eternally illuminated or not, that's a sign regulation kind of thing. So we'll comply with whatever, you know, regs are out there for that. That's typically handled as a separate permit.
Okay, thank you.
Colleen, you okay with that?
My name's Casey.
I'm sorry, Casey. Sorry. Too many Cs.
Am I, so I did take note, so, by the way, you still need to accept this application as complete. I recommend doing that, but I, so I am taking notes here to add to your recommended conditions. So I added one to add snow storage as a note to the plan indicating where it is, and also amending the landscaping plan to show the greenery in front of the building.
And the sign?
So he, the applicant is correct, the sign is handled separately as a sign.
Okay, fine, all right, good. All right, further questions?
Well, yeah, you didn't mention anything about looking at this other driveway entrance, did you? Did you just not pick that up?
No. I did pick that up, but I'm not sure how to draft that as a condition because they have to get an updated DOT permit, so it's, it's a little out of the town's hands. Do you, how would you like me to wordsmith it if you want that added? Just asking the applicant to look into that? I can draft something like that.
That's what I would suggest.
I, I would think that would be a recommendation, a verbal recommendation to them and not a subject condition. All right, before we get any further, I would like to address the completeness of the application.
Yeah.
And can I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second then.
Thank you. All in favor of accepting the application as substantially complete?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero. Okay. More?
Oh.
Are you good?
I think I'm, I think I've said what I had to say, but.
Okay.
I don't, don't think I liked the answer yet.
Well, we don't always get what we want, so. All right, I think we need to address waivers first.
Yep, so I just wanted to point out, so in the staff memo, if you look to page two, that is where we listed the necessary waivers. If you look at the staff memo, it looks like there's a total of six waivers that are necessary. Since this memo was written, we have determined that one of them is no longer necessary.
The third one, yep.
Yeah, so it's listed, it's the very last one on page two about the location of the driveway. They have since changed the plans and that one is no longer necessary. So you're now only voting on five waiver requests.
Okay.
And you do need to open this public hearing as well.
What page are you on, on that, can you see that?
Yeah, sure, so the page numbers are at the top rather than the bottom, so you're looking at page two of the staff memo.
Okay, gotcha, all right, I'm with you now.
All right, no further questions here, let's open the public hearing. Anybody who would like to speak for this proposal? Kindly identify yourself. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against this proposal? Nobody seems to want to talk about it, so I guess we will close the public hearing. And what's the board's preference? Deal with waivers first.
We're going to do the waivers first, yeah.
And we have five of them.
Why do I only have three?
Yeah.
Can we review which waivers we're actually looking at? Because number three of the applicant waivers does not appear to be.
If we look at the staff memo on page two.
I'm on two.
We got waivers.
Yep.
And they do spill onto page three.
Yep.
I got that.
So we've got one, two, three under waivers.
Yep, but the third one is about the trees and the trees no longer exist and haven't existed for two years. So is that really?
Yeah, there's, there's probably a couple of approaches to that, whether a waiver is simply not applicable versus them needing to grant the waiver. I think, I think that was just staff saying that a waiver's necessary because that was not noted on the plan.
Okay.
If the board feels it's just simply not applicable, you guys can make that decision.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody agree? Not applicable?
Yes.
All right, so we've got one and two, and then staff notes of following waivers, under interrupted length of the sod and driveways no closer than 50 feet from the intersection street. So we've got four, and one then on page three. Oh, they, they, they've withdrawn that one, so we don't, so we have four waivers.
Yes.
What's the board's preference?
I'll make a motion to find that with the granted waivers and the proposed conditions of approval.
We haven't granted waivers yet, we need to do grant waivers first.
I make a motion to grant the waivers, the four that we discussed, not the last.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Barbara.
I got notes.
Following Colleen, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Five, zero, zero. All right, now you can go for it, Dad.
Sorry. All right, now I'll make a motion to find that with the granted waivers and the proposed conditions of approval, that the application meets all applicable regulatory requirements and further to grant conditional final approval to the application's subject to the recommended conditions of approval presented in the staff memo dated December 11th, 2023.
And those added today via?
With the two that I verbally added.
The two that you verbally added, yeah.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
Barbara, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining, we are four, one, zero. Nelson is opposing.
Nelson is opposing or abstaining?
Opposing, so four, one, zero.
Yes.
And, and I'm sorry to go back to the waiver request, but you didn't say which justification the waiver?
My apologies.
Yeah, just for my minutes, thank you.
Second one.
With. With strict conformity, proposing unnecessary hardship to the, or would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
So the first one?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we are on to number five, Serenity Development applicant and Paul Gilbert, the owner, review for consideration of a conditional use permit to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit on ADU with a basement and garage. The parcel is located at 170 Camp Sergeant Road in the R4 residential by soils and aquifer conservation districts and the Wellhead Protection Area. This is tax map 2B, lot 311 hyphen four, case planning board 2023 hyphen 32. Come on down.
My name's Kevin Monroe from Serenity Development.
And I'm Paul Gilbert, the owner.
Okay. Tell us what you've got in mind.
Paul has asked us, we've done numerous renovations to their home and he's asked us to come back and put a thousand square foot or, it's actually 998 square feet, two-bedroom ADU in the back of the property. We have submitted all the documents and meet every town requirement with ease, so right now we're just trying to find out if there's anybody in opposition to it.
Okay. We've got questions here from the board? You want to go through a little more clarity?
Give us a brief overview, I, I think I understand it, but.
So you have an existing residence that's on the property right now, they have 3.1 acres. Their existing residences in the front of the property, in the back of the property, there's, we probably 250, 300 feet easily to the back property line. There's a whole set, if you look at the plan, you'll see the tree line there, we're just going to open up the tree line in the back there and put the ADU in the back of the property. We were just doing an addition in the back of the home, master bedroom addition, and if you were driving by or something, you would see a temporary entrance there right now that was used for the addition right now. That's where the driveway is going to be located and it's just going to go right down the left-hand side of the property, the ADU in the back. We do show all the services and everything on there. We will be relocating the meter off the house to another portion of the property, so we can bring 400 AEP services and split 200 each side of each building.
Okay.
We've kept, we've done it, we've, we've looked at the property, we've looked in the back, what we're trying to do is in a way that it doesn't, it doesn't visually detract from anything. It's going to stay as a low-slung ranch with hip roofs, similar to the house in the front. We're going to take down minimal trees, so I mean, I think at the most we're probably clearing 25 feet.
It looks like where you're placing the property is not anywhere near any of your budding properties.
Not at all, and we've done that purposely.
Yep.
I see the one immediately east of you has a house close to the road. And nothing down there in that long slice.
No, nothing at all.
And then we've got some buffering in there, so.
No, it's all woods.
Yep. Comments?
Just a question.
Barb?
This is.
Barb?
Barb? Oh, I'm sorry.
Nelson is so used to going first.
Sorry, Nelson.
Go ahead, Barb.
I don't understand where it's going, so.
Have you seen, did you?
I see a big wetlands area, but I don't see the proposed, that's it? Okay.
Do you have a color, do you have a color?
Yeah, I am, I got that.
Our printers are in black and white, so it does not have the.
Okay, that's why, so if you were, you see Camp Sergeant Road.
That makes it easier.
Came in the mail. Oh, yeah. That's why I had no problem with.
Bear with us.
Sure.
Okay.
You're good?
All right, Nelson, your turn.
Okay, well, I think the use of color is very helpful.
Is very, yes.
That, that red stands out and it's very easy to see. My question had to do with sewerage to this particular ADU. Where does the sewer line go from here? Is this part of the Nashua system or the Meramec system?
Paul, let's, I'll let you, is your sewer bill, I believe you're from Meramec?
Yeah, I believe it's coming from Meramec.
So it used to be on a septic and then the prior owner, if you look on the plan, the back left-hand corner of the existing residence, they tied into the Meramec sewerage. They went across the back of the property and now we'll be tying into that.
Does it go to the, the Meramec?
It may, it may actually go to Penachuk.
It may, that's the thing.
You may get the bill from Meramec, but there's a section of Camp Sergeant down or Nattikup down close to, I, I think from this corner down to Continental that is actually feeding the Penachuk.
Okay.
And there may be some restrictions on that that I don't know about.
There could be.
But there were at the time of this whole thing came about, it was agreed to send the sewerage to Nashua via the, that little patch of land right down at the bottom.
We had an instance where, oh, a couple of years ago. We had an instance where, oh, a couple of years ago, down close to where Enterprise Car is, that end of the road is actually sending to Penachuk. And they wanted to add the sewerage to one of those properties and Penachuk said no. So, it would have to be something that you're going to have to look into whether you can do that.
We could do that. I can go and tax Penachuk easily.
Yeah.
It may be just that, that far section down close to Amer Street that is Penachuk, but it may actually come up this far. So, we'd have to look into that.
Okay, we can, I can, I can look into that.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That's my only concern with this, yeah.
Is this intended to be a rental unit or?
No, not at all.
No, it's for my daughter to live in, for family.
Although it could be a rental unit as long as you are living in the primary house.
I am intending for my daughter to live there. I can't say forever what the property will be used for, yeah.
But if you sold it?
I have no intentions of selling in the near future, so.
The definition of an ADU is the owner has to be living in one or the other properties. The second can be anyone, but yes, nice that you can provide it for your daughter.
And they have to be on the same property.
Yes.
He can't sell this separately.
No, no, he can't.
I have no intentions of doing so.
No. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No other questions.
Open for a public hearing? Anybody? Grace, you got anything to say? Nope, she's all set. Okay. Close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, we do have that letter from.
Yes, I will read that in. Thank you, Barb. To whom it may concern, this was sent directly to Community Development in reference to one, seventy Camp Sergeant Road. I purchased my home in a built-up neighborhood. I never expected to be notified that the town allowed people to cram a second house on their lot. The intended location of this new house will be as close to my lot line as legally allowed. I prefer that this additional house not be built. Sincerely, Mary McDonald. So, I'm just reading that into the record. What's the will of the board? I closed the public hearing. Yes, did I? Yes, okay. Will of the board?
If I can find the words, I'll make a motion to approve this as requested. With the condition that they look into the sewerage.
They're, that they are able to resolve the sewerage.
That's right, that they're able to resolve, yeah.
Would you be okay with that, Casey?
Yes, I'll let that in.
Okay.
Okay, what I'd like to do is grant final approval to the conditional use permit application with the following general and subsequent conditions.
As listed in memo dated.
Listed in this memo of nineteen December twenty twenty-three by the staff.
Eleven December.
I guess we can't read it very well. Well.
No, that's good.
No, it's the twelve, it's the nineteenth of this. On this page, it says the nineteenth. On there, it says, okay. Different dates on different pages of this memo.
All right, Casey, we're good? All in, I got a second? Barb, thank you. All in favor? Five, zero, zero. Resolving your sewer issue, you should be good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Family's important. That's good.
There you go.
Planning and zoning administrators report. Anything else coming in?
Yeah, nope, I don't have anything for you.
Okay. Minutes of Tuesday, December fifth. Anybody concerned?
I have a couple of the questions. Page four, let me see. Let me see.
What line, Nelson?
Oh, okay. It had to do, it was more of a question than anything else. And it has to do with the, this is the sewer expansion. And the sewer expansion.
Give me a.
Okay, sorry about that. Page four, page four, around line one eighty, one eighty-one, one eighty-two, that paragraph.
Okay.
In there, it, Mr. McHale stated that the wastewater treatment plant is always funded by user fees, meaning anyone who has town sewer would be funding these projects. It is not included in the tax rate. He also had questions about sewer extension funding. And what I think he said was that the expansion of the sewer does come out of, comes out of town funds.
Tax rate.
The tax rate. And whereas the operation and everything on the wastewater treatment plant, she goes, what happened to that?
I'm running down what you're saying.
Okay, you know what I'm getting at? Casey, maybe you weren't there. But the issue, the question was, who pays for this expansion? And the answer really is the town is going to pay for the expansion of the sewer lines, whereas the operation of the plant is paid for by the users of the wastewater treatment plant.
That's correct.
It, it kind of tails off here, whoever wrote the memo.
The, the pipes themselves that lead to the wastewater treatment facility are considered part of DBW and they are town infrastructure.
Exactly.
Whereas the facility itself is only paid for by the, the user fees by the, who is ever on that system.
Yeah. Right.
We can make that amendment.
Any other?
The next question I had was on page six of twelve. And it was item five, it's line, on line two forty-eight. It refers to a Mr. Underwood. And it was really Mr. Pratt who was doing that talking.
From Underwood.
That's why he's called Mr. Underwood. Okay. That's where, and it's done it again on line two sixty-nine.
Okay.
There's two places referring to Mr. Underwood that should be Mr. Pratt. That's the, that, and on line two seventy-three, it says the plan it to continue, the plan is to continue.
Scriven as error.
What?
Okay.
You got it, Casey?
Motion to approve as amended?
With amendment, with amendment says I suggest, right.
Second. Thank you, Barb. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstaining, we're five, zero, zero. Second?
Second, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All in favor, five, zero, zero.